So I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Lake Mills City Council for January 7th, 2025. So Madison, would you please call the room?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
And Mr. Waters already informed us that he will not be here tonight. He's traveling. So this is it. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next agenda item number four is Councilmember Board Reports and Acceptance of Meeting Minutes. So we have our City Council minutes from December 17th of 2024 and our Parks Board meeting minutes from November 11th of 2024. Are there any comments or corrections on either of those minutes? No? Okay, seeing none, we will accept both of those sets of minutes into our public record then. Our next item is correspondence. Michelle, would you like to go first?
Sure. So I received several emails regarding the topic that's on our agenda tonight with with the library in support, and then the email from you regarding the awards banquet for the Fire Department, and several emails having to do with Wangard.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
I have the same, and I also have, excuse me, several correspondences around the Sandy Beach redevelopment and winter parking ordinance and the street light, one street light in need of repair, which I already took care of with the Streets Department.
Great. Steve?
I had pretty much all the same, the Sandy Beach, our apartments, library, and then also one email on the PFAS and also the awarded banquet for the Fire Department.
Yep, thanks. I think we all got that one on, the PFAS and FISH advisories.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Okay, so I got all the same that everyone has described, several contacts on the library referendum that's on our agenda tonight. I did get a contact about the Enbridge oil spill down in the town of Oakland and wondering whether that would be impacting our city wells, and I referred that constituent to some recent reporting that said that it was confined to the site, so shouldn't be impacting our wells. Also got a contact about renewable energy and a constituent interested in the city pursuing additional initiatives there, so I referred her to Randy Myrum, our director, and the Public Works Board. And then I got a contact regarding a tree damage claim. So I think those are... Oh! Okay, that sounds good. Before we move on, I hope this is now of order, and a number of us got comments, I think, regarding the Wangard proposal, and Drake, I think you have an update there that might be helpful to share before we move into public comment?
Sure. Wangard has requested to remove their item from the January 21st meeting. We will, in the coming days, be receiving a letter from the current property owner offering, with an offer to sell to the city. They wanted to give that opportunity to the city in light of comments that they have received, and so rather than requesting that their application be considered, Wangard wants to give the city time to consider that opportunity. So once we receive the letter, we will review it and we will schedule a time to have a discussion regarding if there's a potential negotiation or if it's just a discussion of what the, what they're looking for.
Okay, so the, the bottom line is that the Wangard development proposal on County Highway B will not be on our January 21st agenda.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll go on to the questions and public comment part of our agenda. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. If there's anyone attending online who would like to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature so that the clerk can be alerted to your interest. So we'll start. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Speak, please come on up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Steve Quant. I'm at 319 South Ferry Drive. You've heard many, many people say that Lake Mills is this Norman Rockwell, Mayberry-like community, a sort of sophisticated, layback, conflict-free community where the place, like the place where Barney Fife used to live a long time ago. If you enter Lake Mills from the north, there's a nice wide tree-lined street with Victorian-style houses. There's even, and as you enter downtown, there's a beautiful triangle that we tend to call a square, and that gets wonderfully lighted over the holidays. There's even a skating rink in the middle of the park where children can skate in the winter, and on warm summer nights, the bandstand features all kinds of different music. On weekend evenings, it's tough to find a place to park downtown. And then if you turn west at the second four-way stop and you travel just two blocks, you see a shimmering 1,200-acre lake surrounded by five large public lakeside parks. That's what people see when they come to Lake Mills, and that's why people like to live here, and that's why people are frantically trying to protect and maintain it. Change is inevitable. People see it coming, but they don't know where we're going or why. And they have a vision of Lake Mills, but they really don't have a vision for Lake Mills. They don't know where we're going, and they're afraid, and they're afraid that Mayberry is going to go away. They want a plan for the future. For years, Lake Mills has been an upscale bedroom community for people who want to live in a quiet, peaceful place, just like Mayberry, and there's no reason to criticize or be ashamed of that desire. People like the fact that these old stately homes are well-maintained and that they align our streets. They like the fact that they can live in a place that's safe from the chaos that they see elsewhere, and they love the fact that they can walk the streets and ride their bikes without fear. Our streets are not crowded. They love the fact that they know their neighbors. This is a great place to live, and people do not want that quality of life to go away. But they do not know where we're going, and they're truly afraid that they will lose what they have. Now more than ever, we need to know what exactly our purpose is. Why do we live here? What do we value? How do we direct our growth? How do we plan for it, and what will growth look like? These are not unreasonable questions. Answering them will require a partnership between citizens, between city leaders, and between stakeholders. We need to plan our future, not simply react when opportunities are dropped in our laps. We need to tell developers where and how we want to grow and not have them come and tell us where they want us to grow. We have an inactive commission in Lake Mills that might be able to help. I'd like to encourage you to reactivate the Lake Mills Economic Development Commission and task them with defining what the vision of Lake Mills looks like.
Please wrap up, Steve.
Pardon?
That's three minutes, so please wrap up. Thanks.
We need a unified message and a common language that describes our core values, why we've chosen to live in Lake Mills, how we wish to be governed, and how we want our community to look and behave. This needs to be a simple document. It probably doesn't have to be more than a page long, but it's a document that describes why we're here, what we'd like life to be like, and, and how we want to ensure that that quality of life is maintained. I volunteered to serve on the Lake Mills Economic Development Commission.
Steve, please wrap it up, because we have others to speak.
And I'm here to help. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Susan Trier, and I'm representing the Board of the Rock Lake Improvement Association, and we are concerned about several issues regarding the proposed Wangard apartment complex. In light of Drake's comments tonight, we suggest that if the City Council continues with the development, that the City Council requests a copy of and carefully review the DNR remediation plan for the site before making any decisions. Our concerns are divided in two areas. First is environmental. We need you to confirm that groundwater from the previous landfill is not moving towards Rock Lake. If it is moving towards the lake, consider directing the groundwater to the sanitary sewer system. Detention basins constructed within the contemplated, contemplated redevelopment should be located down gradient from the landfill. Stormwater infiltration should not be encouraged or allowed to occur over or above the previous landfill area. The landfill area should be capped with buildings, asphalt, or clay, and minimize all infiltration. And then also, if possible, design the site solution in a manner that allows the soils that are currently on site to remain on site, minimize the transportation of construction tracking of potentially contaminated soils onto County B. Other concerns we have focus on Tyrenina Park. Tyrenina Park shoreline is already experiencing erosion, and the main trail connecting the two parking lots is not designed to accommodate extensive foot traffic. If this project is approved, many more residents will seek access to the park and the lake. The city will need to review and redesign the trails according to sustainable trail principles, install pet waste stations, and consider providing established lake access for paddle sports. We also think that there should be no reduction in multifamily zoning parking requirements. If anything, this land, if this land is rezoned, additional parking requirements should be placed on the site as there is no overflow street parking available. Also, given that we're talking about trees tonight, I think it's important that the site at the geographic pinch point between the lake and the interstate, if there's any contemplation of a future widening or improvement of County Highway B, it should occur on the north side of the road. If said improvements are a future consideration, the required land should be taken from the site in conjunction with the rezoning process. We do not think that any improvement should currently take part in Tyrenina Park land. So thank you very much for your careful consideration on these issues.
Thank you, Susan. And I would note, I received an email from Rock Lake Improvement Association summarizing those, but I found it in my junk mail, so if any other council members did not receive it, you might want to just check there in case it got flagged as spam for some reason. So, thank you. Next, Anita.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Anita Martin. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills. I'm here to support Resolution 25-01 authorizing the LD Fargo Library Edition and placing the renovation referendum question on the upcoming April 1st, 2025 ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak tonight? Let's see, we've got a few listening in. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so we will close public comment for this evening. Thank you. So our next item on the agenda, item seven, is the City Manager's Report. Drake?
Nothing further to report.
So we have the, the monthly Fire Department reports from December are attached. Any questions for Drake this evening? Okay, so we will move on to item eight, then Council Business, and our first item on the agenda is a presentation from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Urban Forest Management Recommendations. So I see the Chair of the Committee, Jeanette Heitman, coming up to the podium. Thanks for being here, Jeanette, and I think there's a couple of members of your committee here in the audience tonight as well.
Excellent, thank you. Please excuse my voice. I'm in the midst of getting healthy, so I will do the best that I can. So I'd like to thank you for having me here this evening to provide a summary of the work that has been completed by the Ad-Hoc Committee on Urban Forestry Management, Resolution 2361B. I'd also like to thank the council for your original approval of this committee. It really exemplifies your support for our urban forest and its importance and for the importance of mature trees within our community, so thank you again for that. Committee members included Matt Blessing, who acted as our secretary, Brandy Duro, Rick Santovic, and Elaine Thousand. Our committee met from December 2023 through December 2024. We met one to two times per month, and our meetings generally lasted an hour and a half to three hours in length. We'd like very much our committee to thank our city representatives and advisors. They provided a great wealth of information and a great deal of their time, and their collaboration with us was essential to this whole committee moving forward, and we're very grateful for that. They included Drake Daly, the City Manager, Eric Schreiner, the City Forester, and Dan Drescher, City Attorney. Our committee looked at many resources throughout this year. They included tree protection policies from 10 Wisconsin communities and some communities outside of the state of Wisconsin. We included resident and community feedback that we received through emails, conversations, and other communication. We also included input and resources received from experts within the fields related to urban forestry, tree protection, including from Anna Haley, the City Forester in, in Fitchburg, and Linda Brewer, the Chairperson of the Fitchburg Tree Protection Committee. We also had three presenters during the year. The first was Michael Heitman, a professional civil engineer with over 25 years of experience in road reconstructions and the bidding process. Susan Volinek, also a community member, gave us a wonderful presentation about her vast knowledge and experience on native species. Jay Weiss was a presenter from the Village of Cambridge. He is their forester and founder and operator of Cambridge Tree Project. The original request for the committee came from many residents within our community that support the principles that urban forests not only provide beauty but also improve the health and well-being of our community. Our committee also followed those same and many other guiding principles. They included that we know that research supports that a healthy urban forest reduces stress in its community members by encouraging physical activity and providing natural beauty. We also know that newly planted trees provide only a fraction of the, of larger, more mature trees. Mature trees play a critical role in creating a safer, healthier, and more connected community. Urban forests also directly combat climate change. Mature trees provide shade and can lower temperatures as much as 10 degrees with underneath their canopies. Mature trees are a natural and affordable way for us to pull carbon dioxide out of our atmosphere. The first charge of our committee was to provide tree protection policies that centered around infrastructure projects within the city. We know that the city sets the parameters for all infrastructure projects. Our committee recommends that, I mean, the council knows and the city knows that the parameters are set for all infrastructure projects by our city. Our committee recommends that the preservation of all trees, specifically mature trees, be a priority when those parameters are being set. We also learned that the design phase of a project is critical to the preservation of trees, that even small changes in the design can have huge impacts on tree preservation. For example, changing high and low points in the road, adjusting inlet placements, and using trenchless methods for installation of dry utilities such as gas, telephone, and electric services. We also learned that consistent communication between city staff and design engineers during the design and pre-construction phase is necessary to assure that tree protections are integrated into these designs. Throughout our process, we learned how tree protections need to be written in to bids and that it is very important how they're written into the bidding process. To achieve competitive bids, tree protection policies must be written in as bid items within a bid and not as alternatives to a bid. Bid items are the individual items that determine the overall cost of a project. Projects are awarded to contractors who are, come in as the lowest overall bidder on the overall cost. If tree protection policies are not included as bid items, they will not be priced competitively because they will not be included in that overall cost. Costs of bid items are easily identified within a bid. Therefore, City Council members or anyone else within the city can easily identify specific costs for specific tree protection plans and policy items. Our, our committee also learned that many of the tree protections that we have recommended and requested of the city are now considered very routine in many communities across Wisconsin. One of the big ones is tree protection zones, which I have a picture here just to identify what a tree protection zone is. Next slide, please. Tree protection zones are a necessary component of any tree protection policy. They protect tree trunks, branches, and the roots from damage. We want to prevent damaging soil compaction, and that is caused by construction equipment running over the root systems of trees and tree lawns, but also by construction companies storing their heavy materials underneath tree canopies. Tree, tree protection zones can vary greatly in cost. They can be as expensive as chain-linked fencing or as inexpensive as snow fencing put in with metal stakes or wooden poles. The important takeaway about tree protection zones is that they are a visual and physical barrier that is in place throughout the construction that protects all existing vegetation entries. These tree protection zones can be managed in a variety of ways. Some communities let the contractor manage the tree protection zones. Our committee, and along with Eric Schreiner, our City Forester, are recommending that the Foresters' Department manage tree protection zones if they are approved, and that can be managed by the City Forester himself, by an arborist, or by a member of their staff that is trained. Next slide, please. One thing that often is overlooked is the soil conditions, and they play a huge role in the health of the existing and newly planted trees. There are many ways to control the soil conditions. One of the largest is that the requirement be made that as much soil that can, that can be preserved on site is, and that it be scraped aside, mounded, and put back in place after construction is completed. That's especially critical around the root system of trees, that the same soil be replaced back in as much as possible. Also, the city being mindful of the requirements that are placed in bids regarding soils and seed replacement is another way to control the soil conditions in our tree lawns. Good soil and good seed allows for good water absorption, which again leads to healthier plantings and a better investment in the money that we have put into the trees and our tree lawns. Our second charge was to provide revisions to Chapter 594, which was entitled Trees. The revisions that we made focused on increasing preservation, education, and continued care of our urban forest. The first change that you might notice is to the title, which we have requested be changed to Trees: Vegetation in Urban Forestry, because we felt that it was more inclusive of all of the items that were covered within this ordinance. We, we looked at many different changes, and one of the largest was to the Master Tree Plan. The Master Tree Plan is a huge undertaking and very critical to our urban forest and to our community. It impacts us for decades to come. For that reason, we are recommending that the Master Tree Plan be created and maintained through a collaborative relationship between the City Forester and the Parks Board. Another addition to this ordinance was the addition of a Heritage Tree Program. Many communities have them, and they are very successful. I'll speak more about it later on in my presentation. The Heritage Tree Programs are created to protect and preserve trees that are deserving of special status due to their distinctive form, size, age, unique qualities, historic significance, or their species. The third and final charge in our committee was making recommendations to the Parks Board. The recommendations that we are bringing forward came from the many lengthy discussions that we had as a committee, from resources that we looked at, from input that we got from the presenters that came before our committee. One of those is to advocate, so I've got my sheets mixed up here. Well, the first one is to advocate for more money, which you hear a lot of, which is nothing new, right? But we're going to suggest that more advocating for funds for the Forestry Department take place. And the reason for that is the Forestry Department is doing a remarkable job with the resources and the staff that they have, but it is inadequate for the needs of our community if we truly are dedicated to a healthy urban forest. There is not enough staff to complete the pruning and trimming of the trees, which is the number one thing that we repeatedly saw in research and were told by presenters that extends the longevity and the health of trees. The ones that take the longest to prune are our mature trees that provide us with the most quality, give back, right, at this point. Our small trees that are just newly planted also require a lot of trimming just to manage their shape and keep them healthy for a long life. It also came to light that our city is 500 trees short of what could be planted, simply because of lack of dollars to purchase them, time to plant them. But there are 500 locations that could take trees on city property at this time, and there simply aren't the dollars and the manpower to do it. The second request was for a watering truck, which has been applied ditches and areas that are, don't have to be open within our park or open areas of play and movement, and they also reduce the need for mowing, which is a wonderful benefit of that. Next slide. We are encouraging continued outreach and community education about the importance of urban forests. We all on the committee learned a great deal during this last year of all of the benefits, benefits of a healthy urban forest beyond what we believed when we came on to the committee, and we would love for more of that information to be spread across our community, not only to educate people... to educate people about what we are lacking in, what else we can do, but how we can protect what we already have. We would like the Parks Board to consider facilitating conversations between forestry, utility services, and the Lake Mills School District. We know that we are going to be having some changes to our schools. With joint conversations, could there be conversations in the design of those additions and those changes to look at preserving existing trees? Or what trees are going to be added? Do they fall in line with the Master Tree Plan for our entire community? And look at collaborative relationships like that. I also had a conversation with the utility supervisor, and he mentioned that many communities put in taller utility poles, and that allows for taller trees on our tree lawns, bigger canopies. So there, I think, are many opportunities for closer relationships between the different entities within our community, and we wonder if the Parks Board is in a wonderful place to start that conversation. And then, excuse me for rummaging around here looking for my place. Advocating for the preservation of the natural beauty of our parks, specifically Commons, Rotary, and Tyrenina Parks. We would love to see a reduction in man-made structures in all our parks, but particularly in those. We understand that we need them in some of our high recreation parks, but in others, we'd love to see more preservation of the natural beauty. And we'd like the Parks Board to continue to promote planting and healthy practices on private property to expand our urban forest. It became extremely evident to all of us through education from all the people that we were working with on this committee that our urban forest is so much more than our parks and our tree lawns. It includes every piece of property within our city, and we all can do our part, and I think many people would love to be more helpful to helping our urban forest be healthier and more robust, but don't have that knowledge. So that was our final recommendation to the Parks Board. Any questions for me?
Any questions from council members for Jeanette?
Mary? Well, thank you very much for all of the work on the trees. I have to say I'm a bit overwhelmed by all of the information that you've shared because you've covered a wide gamut of proposal, recommendations, and ideas. So, and by the way, I'm a tree hugger, so I'm all about trees. I do have a few questions, though, specifically, and I don't see Eric here, so this is maybe more an Eric, oh, is Eric online? Eric, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, Eric, there are a lot of recommendations in the, kind of, in the Parks Board, a kind of an item category number three, having to do with Eric and his team picking up additional countabilities. And I was curious to know if the committee talked about how to enable or to get additional community members to rally around supporting any of the recommendations. And I'll use it as an example, I know we have volunteers who do the planters downtown. We have volunteers who actually take care of different areas of our parks, to take care of the gardens down at Bartles Beach as an example, because there are limited resources.
Right.
We all, I mean, we have, one thing I love about this city, and I've mentioned this to Drake, is that we have everyone, there's so much passion and energy around, I like Steve's words, I don't know if it was the name of that old person that you referenced in your.
Barney Fife.
Barney Fife, I'm not sure I really, I don't know.
You're showing your age right now.
Maybe I'm too young, I don't know who Barney Fife is. But we have, I mean, trees are a big part of our identity, of the character, and then there are a lot of expectations and a lot of different ways to what that character, how it presents itself as a small town.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious how we enable the community to possibly be a part of assisting in this large endeavor with trees because they are, I mean, they're everywhere, we have, I don't know how many square miles we are as a city, but it's, we're, it's a big task, a big on-taking, and I know we always struggle, it appears to get volunteers in all different spaces. So I'm curious if you talked about community.
Yeah, we did, and Eric can speak to it, but I'll just mention that, and I'm glad you asked that question because there was a statement that I wanted to make, and I am a part of the Flower Bed Program and have been for many, many years, and it is a fantastic program and originated at the Parks Board. So, one of the, that discussion did come up, like, how can we be making more recommendations? And we felt that it was important to share the knowledge that we learned throughout this year. There were many, many times where it all felt extremely overwhelming to us, too, walking into this. I think we didn't understand the depth and the breadth of all of the information that was out there and how it all interplays with one another and affects all things going forward, right? But for example, the Heritage Tree Program, which is something that many communities have, Matt Blessing and many of the other community, the committee members, but Matt had a wonderful idea of, you know, could there be a committee or a volunteer organization like that does the city flower beds, an individual that kind of heads that? And could there be a kind of marriage between that and maybe our school district, maybe a botany class, a biology class? Could they create a website that pictures and takes pictures of the trees that Eric approves if we go forward with this Heritage Tree Program? So we were really looking at when we make these recommendations to the Parks Board, not just, you know, tossing it at them, but I think myself for sure would be very happy to provide, you know, more information, or our goal is to get the community involved and not just put more work on an overworked department already that's doing a fantastic job with what they have.
Thank you.
Did you say you had several questions, Mary?
Yeah, we'll have to go back a page.
Oh, okay.
Somebody else has one.
Eric, did you want to?
Eric, did you have anything to add on that?
I would just like to thank Jeanette for complimenting the department. I do agree that if there were to be a Heritage Tree Program, I would like to see more community involvement, and I do think that it would be able to be done similar to the actual flower bed groups that are out there.
Oh, I did, can I ask another question now? Thanks, Eric, gave me a chance to find my notes. Question on mature trees. I know pruning is a really important aspect, and I'm curious if the committee talked at all about the risks of mature trees. So, wind, high wind events, they are more brittle, they're more fragile, they take on higher damage, if you will, and so thoughts on the consequences of like how to managing that aspect of having a really mature canopy, given changes in environmental dynamics?
And so you speak exactly to what I was talking about. Those things, nothing is preventable, right? Nothing exists that can't cause damage or injury in many aspects, right? Things can fall, but proper maintenance and monitoring of mature trees can prevent much of the concern about them being damaged, and some will get damaged in a storm, but a lot of those concerns are preventable through the inspections that the city provides of all the trees. But that trimming is critical to that, and again, the department is being hindered by a lack of staff and monies to do that. But I'll let Eric comment more on that, he's the expert on it.
Jeanette is absolutely correct, thank you for saying that. Pruning and structural pruning is absolutely critical in defining the actual structure of the tree itself. With pruning, potential storm damage can be mitigated. I'm glad that she said that it is an unpreventable thing that will happen. However, the amount of time that we spend on pruning does correlate to the less damages that could potentially occur in a tree.
And it's such a balance, isn't it, between, you know, dollars and the beauty and the, so many of us in our community feel that the benefits of these mature trees, what they give to the beauty, the health, the welfare, and our climate really need to be considered and invested in. Once they're taken down, some of these trees have taken hundreds of years to grow.
Michelle, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was looking through the material, and I noted that there was, in the updates to the tree ordinance for the November 11th meeting, you had said the Heritage Tree was to be defined in the code. Did you have a definition for heritage trees? I was thinking more of like how old are we looking at to define a heritage tree?
There is, you will eventually be forwarded a complete redline version of 594 with the recommended changes against it. I just didn't have time to compile it, so we'll be taking the existing ordinance that you have and then basically putting it into a format that you're used to seeing for consideration of a potential ordinance change. Within that Heritage Tree section, there are, there's a list of several criteria for which a tree could qualify for Heritage Tree. Some of them are automatic qualifiers, like, I don't remember what the age of it, age or size of it is, but if it is of a certain age or of a certain size, it qualifies. If it's not, there's a whole list of other things that it can do to qualify for the program. So you will see all of the recommended changes from the committee in the format you're used to seeing, and it'll be side by side with what currently exists and then what the changes that would flow throughout the document. There's probably enough changes in this one that we would do a repeal and recreation rather than just an amendment for your consideration, but you'll see, you'll be able to see how it would differ from what you have now. So you have kind of the list of what is recommended to change, and you'll see the full detailed written format once we can redline the existing ordinance for you.
Okay, because I was looking at the code on our website and trying to find, in 594-8, I think is where it was talking about heritage trees.
It doesn't exist yet.
It doesn't exist yet, okay.
No, it doesn't.
There we go.
In Drake's defense.
No wonder, I'm not crazy. Yeah, I mean, I am a little, but not that crazy.
No, no.
Okay, all right, great.
We worked up to the very, very last moment, and so Drake did not have time to make those changes, I know, and we appreciate all the work that he has done to move forward our recommendations. And we did work, you know, Eric and Drake were, I think, at every single meeting with us, and we tried to work very closely with Eric, and Eric can comment on that, in terms of this balance of trying to add new important material, again, without adding a lot of work, and Eric played a big role in the parameters that we set for that Heritage Tree Program because, you know, there's not the possibility to go out and measure each tree and determine its age, and so we looked at features that would be important, definitely, but that would also make this more streamlined, and that also came into play with, like, how are we going to document this Heritage Tree Program? So, you know, we came up with the idea of, you know, a person would apply, Eric would go out and check the tree, and then there'd be a picture taken, and that, that's just going to be uploaded to a location on the website, and that's where we came up with this idea Matt did of partnering with the schools. Could they be, you know, putting that all together for the city? So really trying to look at expanding this without adding a lot of work on any department or individual.
Thank you. Steve, did you have any questions or comments?
Not right at the moment, I guess I'd like to see kind of the final language and kind of see, I know there's a lot of recommendations, excuse me, and just trying to put some spreadsheets together of costs, because I know we're looking at having our, some of our projects bid based on that this spring so we can kind of see what it does to the bottom line also.
Yeah, so when you, when eventually the Milton Street Design gets to you, you'll see, you've got the tree protection policy that you approved kind of as a pilot program is incorporated into the bid specifications, and then you'll see what you would, basically if you deducted them out, you know, what you would, what that cost, you'll see that exact cost. So it's included in the bid document, and then you have to take it out, and you'll have the costs associated with it. So that'll be coming up for you in the coming months. We did already have a public informational meeting with Milton Street residents that live along there and introduced the tree protection policy to them as well. You can see some kind of high-level work in the lobby that's been sitting out for anybody to view who may have walked by to kind of see some information on it. So you'll get, specifically to infrastructure projects, you'll kind of see what it looks like here at our first one since the committee has done this work.
And I really appreciate, you know, Susan Trier's comment about, you know, this is very timely with the, some of the new changes with city expansion that is being discussed that, you know, that, again, how important our urban forest is to us and to reduce as much as possible the elimination of trees that do not need to be eliminated and looking at other alternative designs and changes in designs that can prevent that from happening.
Thank you, and I also want to just extend my thanks generally to the whole committee, Jeanette, we have Matt Blessing and Rick Santovico are here tonight, and then Brandy Duro and Elaine Thousand, who I don't see in the room, but the five of you invested a significant amount of time in the last year plus, so I really appreciate just that dedication and all of the work that you did. The resolution that the council passed a little over a year ago had three deliverables, and you gave us one last summer, so that's one that we've already been, you know, studying and having, applying it for some of our future street projects to see how that would, you know, work when it's applied. And then I appreciate, one of the documents that we have tonight is a summary of your three products, so thank you for that. So that just helps us all kind of wrap our heads around and helps everyone else in the community see, you know, kind of a summary of the work that you all did and the recommendations that you have for us. So we'll look forward to getting that, the, kind of the draft ordinance language, but I think the summary gives us the highlights. One of the things that I, we've talked a little bit about this already, but one of the things that I'm really excited about is that Heritage Tree Program because I think it can serve so many positives in terms of recognizing the benefits of trees, educating people about the benefits of mature trees, a sense of pride when they're on someone's private property, that they can feel some pride and feel some desire to continue to maintain that, and just the overall education enthusiasm that I think that it could help to build in the community. So I'm really excited about that moving forward. And with that, I guess we've got, we'll be getting some additional documents, and so I think this is a lot of stuff for us as council members to digest, and so then we can each be thinking about what items would we want to move forward to ordinance changes. I guess the third item is for the Parks Board to be delivered to them, so Drake, if you could do that, you know, get that to the Parks Board.
I'll be speaking to them next Monday, too.
Oh, fantastic, okay, great. So then they'll get your recommendations directly, and they can take those up as they review, you know, different projects and policies as well, so.
Right.
Is there anything else from council members or staff that you'd like to add or ask? Thank you again, Jeanette, thank you to your entire committee, appreciate your year-plus of work on this topic, we're really grateful for it.
It was our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we can move on then to our next agenda item, which is Resolution 25-1 related to a library expansion advisory referendum. So Madison, would you read that resolution title for us, please?
Resolution 25-1 authorizing LD Fargo Library Addition and Renovation Referendum question for the April 1st, 2025 ballot.
I move to approve Resolution 25-1 authorizing LD Fargo Library Addition and Renovation Referendum question for the April 1st, 2025 ballot.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Kednaw. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Fields. So I believe we have a staff presentation from our library director, so we'll ask Gerard Saylor to come on up.
Yes. I'm Gerard from the library. So part of this is about the resolution and also just a project update in general, because I hadn't made one of those in a while, and so we have the slideshow, and Dave, if you could do the next one. Just current timeline where we're going on, we began the whole process in about 2019. And that started out at about $11 million, $13 million, which was way too much money. We cut that down to about six and a half when we went for the grant mid-year. Didn't get the grant, and library board set a max budget of $4.5 million, and we've been building to that project price. And fundraising process has begun. We've had some good success on that. Jody Sweeney is going to speak after me to that success, as well as Jackie Irwin. And right now, we're continuing to move forward on that. Next slide, please. So some highlights about what the project is going to do. As I've mentioned, over the years, we're half the size of what we need to be, but we don't have the money to double our capacity. And so what we're talking about now is the existing first floor. We'd add a brand-new second floor to that and also increase some square footage on the sides a little bit. And some of the key improvements for that is a brand-new children's area, which should double in size, roughly. We still have repeated demand for meeting space. We'd be creating, I think, five new meeting areas for that. That would include study and workspace. We'd have a brand-new teen and young adult section. If you've been on the main floor, it's the teen area, it's kind of right in the middle. There's not anything for noise abatement, and there's just not enough seating for the teens to be in there. Shelving capacity, our collection is too small for our service size. We'd be able to include that. And new and efficient HVAC, we'd be getting a geothermal system. Right now, I think we've got like 11 or 12 different units used to heat and cool the building, including a boiler that we've been looking to replace, and some AC units that have already kind of died, and we're limping along until an expansion. Next slide. So new children's floor, this layout is a little bit distorted. It's a little longer than it should be, but on the right-hand side is where the existing meeting room is, and everything to the left of that, it'd be brand-new second floor, and that will all be new children's area. So the current children's area is roughly the floor space of the meeting room now. It's in, it's in the cellar, is what it's in. It's not just the basement, it's in the cellar. And we moved that up into a brand-new area on the second floor. That would include staff play, staff area and the teen area, if you can go to the next slide. There'd be a dedicated programming room. Right now, the meeting area is shared by everybody. Library programs have a priority, but we don't have enough space up there to actually hold everything. So staff, staff spend a lot of time just moving everything up and down with the elevator. With this program, they'd be right next to a brand-new program room, have all the materials there, they'd be saving time for setup and breakdown. So that would be a dedicated story room. We'd be able to do additional story times, hopefully, I mean, that's just depending on staff capacity, but it would be easier to do, more manageable. We're looking at doing more enhanced literacy programming with Watertown Community, Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation, if I have the full name right, and additional educational programs for parents. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights of the children's space, again, we're so cramped down in the cellar, there's, there's not a creative play area, there's not a space for newly mobile kids prewalkers, which we talk about there, we've had that designed in. Additional shelving space, educational play space, I used to volunteer at the elementary school when my kids were there, and it was always a big thing when in first and second grade and kindergarten, they're allowed to go to the creative play area and just do what they're doing there. And we, if we have something like that, I think there'd be a significant upgrade. Reading nooks, just regular seating for kids to sit and read. Technology upgrades and lactation room. Right now, we do have a restroom in the lower level, but we don't have any kind of family room, lactation room, and that's been designed in as well. Meeting room space, just yesterday, we had a bunch of kids come in, high school kids. The teen room does not have the room to take everybody in, and they wanted to do gaming, board gaming. And so we, they were able, the room was available upstairs, and they were able to go up there. And every day, we have people just kind of wandering in saying, hey, do you have study space? Do you have rooms? So we have to direct them to tables in the back, that's the only spot we have for them. So anybody who wants to do anything where they need to really focus, they need a lot of quiet, they're not going to get that. If they need to have any kind of online meetings, if they haven't had to have any one-on-one meetings, any conversation can disturb everybody else, and there's no privacy at all either. And so the new main floor will include four distinct meeting rooms, and those ranging in size, and then the upper-level eight-person room. Next, please. And that I just use the fancy arrows available in the software to point out where the building space was. Next. And the teen area, again, a big upgrade, glass wall for supervision, so we can make sure they're not monkeying around. Extra seating, laptop space. I was always a little pessimistic about whether those actually get used, but all the other libraries I've spoken to and the architects have said that actually gets used for people sitting down with the laptops. And we've cut back on the number of public computers we have over the last few years just because everybody's bringing in their own devices. And then they would have their own study space as well, which would be available to the rest of the community, too. Next. Well, that's it. Q and A. So I just wanted to highlight some of the real benefits we'll be getting from the project. And of course, we are talking about expansion, and the expansion is dependent, not only on the fundraising, but the fundraising is also dependent on city support. We have a lot of donors who want to know that the city is going to be helping support it, and this is a viable project, it's achievable financially, but that's, I mean, the city voting in favor of that is half of the project. And so Jody will come up and talk to the success and the plans that we have for capital fundraising right now.
Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll recognize Jody Sweeney, who's a half, even up to $2 million. That has never been attempted in Lake Mills, anything this size, but I believe that easily you can do this, it's going to take a little work, but we do, as Gerard said, need the city to be behind this project. And we have a number of donors who have said, we're interested, we want to see where the city stands. In terms of campaign planning, our policies are all in place, the library board has approved them, we have campaign materials ready to go. In terms of initial fundraising, there is $400,000 in library reserves that can be used for this, and we recently got a $100,000 gift through the community foundation. And I will talk in a minute about the most exciting part of the fundraising, the extraordinary women piece, but we have lots of other things that are showing community support. As Gerard said, the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation is willing to take a proposal at the end of this month for a major gift that will go towards the children's area. The community foundation in the middle of the month will take a vote on partnering with the library in terms of providing administrative support, taking the pledges, we will offer five-year pledges, and they are looking at that. The Bank of Lake Mills is considering a gift, again, they're one of those donors that is looking at where the city stands before they make a decision, but they want to make a lead gift and encourage the other banks and the other businesses in town to support us. So there's lots of, of things going on in terms of all the planning. And as I said, perhaps the most, the fun, the one that's most fun is we have started 100 extraordinary women. We're asking a minimum of 100 women in the community to each give or pledge $1,000 over five years, $200 a year, $17 a month, raising at least $100,000. We started just a couple of months ago, and as of this afternoon, we have $76,000 in pledge, yes, I know, I, I did the same thing when I did the math, yay. Some of those are verbal, and we got a wonderful match from someone of $10,000, so 10 gifts will be automatically matched. But we are moving, we have a committee, we have table captains, we are planning a, to get all those pledges in, go over 100, raise more than 100,000, and then have a celebration event in early May. So that is well on the road, and a lot of those women have said we'd like to consider additional gifts. So we are on a, we are on a roll. And as you can see, there are a lot of extraordinary women who have already committed here tonight to show their support, and Jackie Irwin's going to speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Jackie Irwin. If there's no objection.
Welcome. Jackie Irwin, 313 South Ferry Drive. I serve on the campaign committee and the 100 extraordinary women committee. I've started a little fundraising for that latter committee, and I got to tell you, it's the easiest fundraising I've ever done. There's a lot of enthusiasm, people love our library. I have old grandmas like me and younger women with school-aged children equally enthusiastic. They are complimentary to library staff or managing the children's library down in the basement, but they think it's time, that the children have a bigger, brighter place to go and start their reading lives and continue their relationship with books. So my guess is that if you move forward to a advisory referendum, you'll see a mirror of this kind of enthusiasm. Nobody said no to me. They have, they support the scope of the project, the price tag, and they've given their $1,000 apiece. So I, I think that the support is there, and I'd ask you to put it on for the April 1st vote date. Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have any more questions for me? I don't want to repeat everything I already put in the memo.
Any questions for Gerard or Drake?
I always, I always have questions. Go ahead, Michelle.
No, I'm good, you go.
Okay, I do, I have a few, I have a few questions. I'm curious to know what your anticipated increase in operational costs are going to be with the expansion. So I'm guessing, because every year, you know, everyone's costs have increased.
Right, so we will need more staff, and I, that is something we've been talking about with the city over time now, just because we're, we're understaffed now as it is. And so that's kind of something I've been thinking about. As far as operational costs, I would have to check on cleaning. I mean, we'd be, I would think 30% more for cleaning, just on increasing the square footage. And heating and cooling should remain the same or go lower, I would imagine, because it'd be a lot more efficient. Right now, we're scheduled to get some new windows in the front of the library, and a lot of our windows are just old. If you talk to Travis about that, he'll really explain about a lot of the efficiencies we'll gain in updating everything. Those are the first two that come to mind for me are, are cleaning and energy costs.
I was just thinking more on the staffing side, because 3,500 square feet, you talked about more programming, and by the way, the renderings are awesome.
Right.
Like, that's really that, especially I haven't really figured out the children's section, I think, would, I mean, it's.
It'd, it'd be a huge improvement, and, and a key part of the staffing, too, is that we'll be going, right now, we never really, we've, the lower level, a benefit to those silly holes in the floor of the lower level is that we can kind of supervise everything from the, the front desk somewhat. We can hear, and we have the cameras available, but if we have the children's area on a brand-new second floor, it's going to be a lot more separate, and we're going to have staff up there, their offices will be up there, so it'll be staffed all the time. And that could be a bit of a stress. The operating hours won't change, but we do need more staff, yeah. I would think we'd need at least another one FTE.
The library is a uniquely staffed department within the city in that there's two full-time employees, and then we have several different levels of part-time employees. And so it has been something that we have discussed over the last couple of years as far as, you know, your increased costs may not be, you know, right away needing to add a person, you may be adding hours, you know, if, you know, current staff, if, if we could bring someone up to full-time or increase hours in such, in such a way that you don't right now need to add people necessarily right away, but you can add capacity within the current staffing to bring them from, you know, we've got .25s, we've got .35s.
Yeah.
The delta to getting them to full-time, now you incur benefits at some point, and so that is a, a higher cost. So it's not that it's as simple as just taking someone from 25 hours a week and you add 15 hours, because eventually you'll become benefit-eligible. But there are staff positions that are funded, but not at the full-time position, so it's not necessarily that you're adding an entire new position. You might be incrementally increasing some of those hours of existing staff members as well. So we could, we'll continue to have that conversation. They haven't indicated that they'll need more staff right away at opening day of the new library, but I think it's something we want to be aware of, to adequately staff a facility that we're providing services out of.
Yeah, and that's something that the library staff have mentioned to me several times over the years, it's just we need more people, but even more if we're going to do an expansion.
Gerard, I had some questions about the, or I've just been thinking a lot about the design, and I appreciate, I served on the library board a couple of years ago, and it had already been being worked on for several years at that point, so I know it's been a long haul, and I thank some of the members of the board who are here who've been working on it all that time. And I'm, you know, the costs are always a challenge, and we're expecting costs, you know, to just continue to go up, we just never know. And I appreciate how the board has kind of scaled this down and put a cap on it in terms of the cost, but also tried to really, you know, provide the most critical amenities that we really need for this population that has grown so much that, that the library serves. I'm wondering about, you know, so we did an advisory referendum in November for the proposed Sandy Beach restaurant, so our community's gotten a little bit familiar with that, and I don't think we've had to do one for quite a while. But so just to remind everybody, it's not binding, and it, it's a requirement of our ordinance if we're going to spend more than half a million dollars on a project. So this resolution is, is asking if people are willing to spend, for the city to spend up to $2.5 million toward this project. The one difference I see here with how things played out with Sandy Beach is we knew, you know, we had the precise design and bid documents and had that all, we knew those dollars when we went to referendum. And this, I know, because of changing and, you know, changing the scale and the scope of it and applying for a grant and not getting it, we're not quite there yet. So that was a long way of getting to, I guess, a couple of my questions. So I'm, I'm wondering if you have a sense of when this design would be ready to bid? Would you expect to be going out to bid before the actual referendum, or would you be waiting until the referendum results? I'm just wondering if you, or the board has thought about that.
Well, we haven't gone forward with any more detailed designs because of the expense to go through that whole process. I think the, the quote was like $300,000, and we weren't going to go forward and do any of that if we didn't know for sure that the project was going to come through in that way. And right now, the timeline is, that we've been working on, is have the advisory referendum go through when it presumably passes, or maybe we say yay, and then the city council would have time to think about that and get it into the CIP plan. it into the CIP plan. But we wouldn't actually be doing any construction until probably '27, '28, maybe later, hopefully not later, because costs are just going to keep going up. And we wanted to get closer to all the fundraising before we actually started spending money and all the design costs. So we wanted to get our money nailed down, that we could afford it before we started doing that. And we are planning out further ahead, so we wouldn't be needing the money right away, so we wouldn't be going out to bid in probably '27.
The only thing I would, I would add to that is, part of the reason this is before you is just because of the lack of elections in 2025. So April is really your only, your only chance. You know, the library's not asking for, nor do I think the city would consider paying for the cost of running an election for an advisory referendum only. And so the library didn't have the luxury of getting further along or anything like that in preparation of a November referendum, which may have been, perhaps they would have enjoyed if that existed. But you're then waiting an entire year to know, to get that public feedback, that's required by our ordinance, before the city starts to have its conversations about where this project fits into its, you know, capital budgeting process. And by having it in April, it will set you up on a good timeline to consider, consider it, you know, a formal commitment of some sort around the time that you're approving the capital improvement plan in the summer. And so it may not be as completely defined as, as Sandy Beach was, but the circumstances are a little different. And instead of having exact known costs, the library board has instead said, you know, we're not going to exceed $4.5 million if it comes back higher than $4.5 million, or you need to value engineer it down to that budget. And then the, you know, the city's contribution is just a piece of that. And so they're closing that gap with their capital campaign.
Okay, that makes sense. And I guess just to follow up on that, I mean, if you could value engineer something down, or you could do more fundraising, or, you know, there would be other things that could be done, but would it be correct to say, and I guess this is maybe for Drake or Attorney Drescher, if we do this referendum now that meets our ordinance obligation, and even if it takes two, three years before the project goes to construction, we've, we've satisfied that requirement?
I believe so.
As long as we don't exceed whatever the dollar amount is in the referendum?
I believe so. I think even if, yeah, in the act of budgeting, you'll be going through that. I think you probably have some discretion, even if it did exceed the amount that you asked a question on. It would be up to the comfort level of the city council as to, as to what you would want to do moving forward. But certainly 2.5 and less, you've certainly satisfied that requirement. And.
And we are asking for 2.5 as kind of a, an overage, too. I mean, we're expecting two, but if fundraising lags behind or anything else, we then have some half-million-dollar cushion in there for any kind of price increases.
And thank you for clarifying that, because I did notice that in your memo, there was kind of an indication that there was a desire for 2 million commitment from the city, but then the referendum says 2.5, so.
Right.
It's, it's kind of a dependent on fundraising, it sounds like what you're saying in part.
And that's a big part of it. If this was just public financing, we could set a dollar amount and go with it. But we are doing fundraising, and I would hope we'd exceed our fundraising goals, but we're still going through that process. And a really key component of the fundraising is city support. And this is a key, I say key a lot, but this is also a key step in getting city support, as if it's the, supported by the community.
Any other questions? Steve, any questions?
Nope. At this time, I've been around for several of Gerard's proposals and done a great job on this one, so I'm looking forward to see how it turns out.
I just would like to make one comment. I, I have, I am really so happy to have a library in the city of Lake Mills. I've lived in communities that don't have a library, and it is really lonely without one. I am struggling with our interest in our financial investments in a large number of community-sponsored entities, one of them being Sandy Beach, which we've had on hold for five years, and we still don't have, I don't think, our financial layout of what that will look like, but it won't be a $0, because we know we have work there. And we have our ratepayers who will be getting a new wastewater treatment plant. I know, I mean, it's money. It's not in the same bucket of money, so we'll have an increase coming to our citizens because we have no choice. Nobody likes to pay for infrastructure, but we have no choice but to add that to our citizens' expenses. And we have also, you know, interest in the library. There is, I mean, I think nothing better than having children who can learn and grow in a cool environment. My grandson loves your lower level because he can't get anywhere, because he's, he's, you know, he's, it's nice and contained, but it's, it is, to the point of the comment, it's an old inside. And so it does need a refresh in some way, shape, or form. And so the only pause I have is how to fit the 2.5 million. So if we were spending 2.5 million, is this how we would spend it? Or what is the amount of millions we're willing to spend, and then how do we frame it out over the course of time so that our citizens have a moderate increase or an increase that is managed, but they're a part of agreeing what they're managing to? So I'm a little nervous that we're going out with the 2.5 million, but yet we don't know what the Sandy Beach add-on could be, would be, will be. I don't know. Are we doing something at Pavilion? Are we not? Because our citizens told us they wanted a restaurant, but not at 3 million. So I think it's complicated. And so I like getting out early, so then we all kind of know what the sentiment is, but we are doing it again as a singleton ask. So it's not, would you do a library and a Sandy Beach and a, knowing you have a rate? So I'm a little nervous about, again, trying to, trying to sort through what the conclusion would be. If it's a no, is it a no just because people don't know what's coming next, or because it was 2.5 million? Was it a no? You know, so I am, I am, I, I want to know, but I'm nervous about the fact that we don't have a good financial plan. I think, Steve, you had talked about that at our strategic planning session in August. We didn't have the library in our top five, but that doesn't mean it doesn't need really good attention and some investment. But at what amount, given everything else we have on the table? And I, so I don't know how to get at that, and I know this is our only meeting because we'd have to get that referendum language in the, in the hopper. So that's the only thing on my mind, is I'm trying to wrap my head around how we handle the answer. And if it's a yes, how do we handle the answer with everything else we still have going, to moderate the changes to tax base and, or just the money?
My, my comment is that pretty much university libraries always get a lot of support. When it comes to voting for dollars, I don't know how that runs down, but it's a fairly small amount, and we are a core city service, an important one. We're an existing service. We already show our value every day. I think people will recognize that. It's iconic part of the city as well. It's usually, you see promotional photos for the city, and they were, the library is almost always on there. It's in the coat of arms, or whatever the logo is for the library as well. It's an important downtown space, meeting space, and something that's been around for 120 years and for another 120 years plus more. So I think that just the library's reputation and existence and ongoing successes, I think, could really sell towards the importance of the library and people voting in favor of the referendum.
I think a good communication about how much per, like we did for the Sandy Beach restaurant, how much per $3,000, $5,000.
Right, yeah, the dollar per $100,000 of value.
Just so people understand.
Yeah.
You know, you're, people know what they're paying now, and they'll know what they'll have to pay in order to enhance, enhance it for the, I, I think so, as long as we're, we have great communication on it. I, I just feel like I'm worried that it's just a singleton ask. We don't have our game plan for all of the other larger investments that we, we haven't solved yet. And so that's, that's just, you know, a comment that I don't know where.
Yeah, and I, we do have, well, I have preliminary plans about just an information campaign to let everybody know about that. I had been working on that more last year. And just getting the word out about what the process is. And, and part of that is part of the capital fundraising as well. It all kind of goes together. You build excitement towards the referendum and the capital campaign. The capital campaign generates more income as well.
Michelle, did you, you held your hand up, you wanted to respond to Mary.
I did.
I do.
I'm curious what you're thinking. So I sit on the library board. I'm an educator, both of the young and the old. But so in thinking about your question, Mary, I had taken down a couple of notes before, but I wasn't sure if I was going to diatribe, but I think I'm going to now. As far as overall investment, in comparing the Sandy Beach restaurant to the library, it's not a fair comparison. The Sandy Beach restaurant, in terms of, of profit, yes, money times money, money, money goes there. But what happens with the library is that when we build early, early reading programs, the overall GPA of our students increases substantially. Not only that, that then kind of falls into what Steve Quant was saying, which was keeping that level of, of education that everyone seems to be understanding of Lake Mills, that Mayberry kind of mentality. When we promote the physical books for kids, it really enhances their need or their education. We do a lot of tablet reading, and, and there's a lot to be said about tablet reading, but physical books for young kids under the age of like even 10 are vital to their education. And when you increase the educational level of the kids, it not only increases their abilities, but it also increases the parents. What I'm trying to say is that the overall investment versus Sandy Beach, that investment, yes, that is an investment property, and yes, we will gain from it because we'll have people visiting our, our lake. But we'll have more people visiting our library and seeing the benefits and seeing the, the ways that we can service the community, because it's a communication, or it's a community with not just the city, but the city and the school district. The reason why there needs to be meeting rooms is mostly because of tutoring. A lot of middle school, and I have a middle school student who's, she's in eighth grade, and God help me, I got the, the freshman letter, and I'm just going to cry a little bit. But the, she routinely used the library as a safe place. And since its location is so close to the middle school and not too far away from the elementary school, there's a lot of foot traffic there for kids. I, I think it's important that, since the majority of the, the enhancements have to do towards children and teens, that that right there speaks to the, the priorities that we, as the city, need to focus on. So.
And I appreciate that. And I am an advocate for the library, so don't all get, don't hear me, I'm asking more about our financial plan.
Yeah.
Not, it's not, this is not, this is not, okay, the library is the subject that is, I'm, why I'm framing my concern. It has more to do with our financial layout of decisions we have ahead of us, that for our citizens, they, I, I, what I'm worried about is we say, we'll say yes to the 2.5 million, and it may, it may very well be the right amount of money and the right decision. And then we come back with other things the community wants, and then all of a sudden, we're starting to stack without being transparent of kind of what's coming ahead, so they can, they can vote in the way that is looking ahead at their pocketbook, not just today, but looking at what's going on over the next five years that they may see. That's all I'm trying to foreshadow, is we have big decisions ahead of us, and this is one of several, and it's just something I'm thinking about, and I don't know how you can, I can, we can solve it today, and we can't solve it today. But it's just something I wanted to bring forward that I'm concerned about, that we have, we have work to do to try to help to be more transparent about what those big things are that are coming, so people understand the costs that are going to either be coming to them because they said yes, or coming to them because we have made a decision to go forward in some way, shape, or form. That's all. It's more of a money thing I was worried about.
Sure. And I can understand and appreciate the money piece of it. I'm just looking at the way that it's going to pay off in the future. That, you know, the cost of living is going to.
It's not a dollar that we see. It's, it's a dollar in a different way. Yeah, I gotcha. I know.
It's not, yep. It's, it's not something we can count.
And I also agree, because as, as a city resident with you, the benefit of this, too, is that the project is further down, and so we're able to fit it into all that planning as well.
Yeah. Drake, did you want to add something?
Yeah, so there's a lot, there's a lot there. I think, first, I would acknowledge that, that yes, there are multiple projects that are necessary, that are coming up in the coming years. And I think it's important to acknowledge that city resident, we have, we have water ratepayers, we have wastewater ratepayers, we have electric ratepayers, and we have taxpayers. City residents are the only group of people that fit in every single one of those buckets.
Yep.
And so they bear a, perhaps, one might say, a disproportionate share of the costs of those, of those expenses, because not everyone who uses all of those services that we, that we get to enjoy in Lake Mills have to pay for those services in, in Lake Mills. So I think that is important to acknowledge. As, as far as this, what's before you tonight, this referendum and that conversation, Mary, that you were kind of suggesting about all of these things that are coming up, I would suggest to the council that approval of the referendum keeps the door open to all of those conversations occurring. If you don't approve the referendum, you've closed the door for at least a certain period of time. And so approving the referendum question does not preclude you from having those prioritizations and making decisions based on the total cost of upcoming projects and how they will impact ratepayers and taxpayers in the future. And it does not, an approval of this referendum does not commit you to 2.5 million. It doesn't commit you to moving forward with the project. But if you don't approve the referendum, you have, you have cut off any momentum that has started, and you have delayed it at least for another, another year until we get to that point. And so you'll be able to consider this project in light of whatever the referendum question brings to you. Now, I, I agree, referendum questions are imperfect ways of soliciting community feedback, because you only get an answer to what you ask. So if you get, if it's a no in April, you don't know if they're saying no to everything, that we don't want to expand the library. You don't know if they're only saying no because they want the 2.5 million, they want a 2 million, not 2.5 million dollars. You also don't know that if someone's voting yes, that they are saying yes, that they wouldn't say yes to more. That they're saying, well, I want to make sure we get the $2.5 million investment from the city, but really, I'm comfortable with a $3.5 million contribution from the city if it were to buy us X, Y, and Z additional amenities and services at the library. So it is, it is imperfect. But approving the referendum allows us to continue the conversation with the library involved in the game with all of the other priorities that you, you had listed. Obviously, the, our debt levy is the one that fluctuates the most year to year, because it's based on what projects we do and what debt service we have. Our operating levy is capped by the state of Wisconsin and the net new construction we have. So you see a lot less movement on that side of your budget than you do on the debt levy. Many people, you know, the, the amount of our, our levy dropped, if you, you know, were looking at tax bills that go out, many people experienced, not all, because it's based on valuation, experienced a reduction, because we actually, we levied less for debt, because a lot of the things we were planning to do, we never ended up levying for. And so there has, we have a healthy amount of debt capacity. That's only one piece of that puzzle, because while we have the ability to borrow the money, it may not be a, an acceptable tax increase in order to be able to fund the, the principal and interest. So I agree, we will have to prioritize what we want to do, and the schedule of where things fit may not be the perfect answer to every, to what everybody wants it to be. But I guess my main point is that approval of this referendum question tonight at least allows that conversation to continue.
Thank you, Drake, for clarifying that. I, I guess something that we've talked about a little bit that I would like to, us to emphasize is I, I do think some communication, frequently asked questions, other kinds of publicity in advance of the April 1st referendum is essential. You know, we, again, it was slightly different with Sandy Beach. We had some precise dollars in a bid and, and so forth. dollars in a bid and so forth. But I think I'm hearing a little more buzz about the library around the community, but I'm still not sure that, you know, everybody's really following that this is going to be coming. So I think, you know, ramping that up in the next couple of months, helping the community understand why we need to expand, what the benefits are, you know, of the invest, of the proposed investment. And as Mary was indicating, you know, some estimate of how much it would affect your personal tax bill. People always want to know that.
I agree.
I think would be, I think will be really helpful for just educating people, but also building support, you know, for the project, if people see the value and the benefits that we'll receive as a community from the investment. I think that will be really helpful.
I do want to reiterate, we will do our best to put together frequently asked questions and financial impact, because it's in some out years, right? It's 2025 right now. The library is looking at construction in 2027 and 28. It's going to be a very imperfect number that we're going to put together, because I, I can project what that, what that, what that base is, because, you know, every year, we're growing some amount. And so the impact on an individual, you know, decreases because there's more, right? There's more that you're spreading it out across. And so I, we can, we can try and, like we did with Sandy Beach, isolate that borrow and what it is associated exactly to that. But to Mary's point, if it's a $55 increase, you know, annually on a $350,000 home, that's in isolation from, you know, a, whatever your monthly wastewater utility bill might go up. And we still don't know exactly when that's going to be constructed.
Right.
It's in, it's in addition to whatever the, you know, whatever Sandy Beach projects we may take on, whatever road projects we decide to take on. What I will say is we have been, we've been successful recently in securing grants. We've, you know, we've got about over $2 million in infrastructure grants for road projects. And so, you know, this, deciding how we choose to schedule our road projects, we have funding coming to us in, you know, at least '27, '28, and '29, I think, are those, are those years. And so that will reduce the need for the city to borrow additional funds to complete those road projects. So we have received some offsets for future projects that we are planning on doing. Obviously, they, they don't approach the size and scope of a wastewater treatment plant, you know, renovation or construction. So those are the big things that we're talking about. But I just, I just want to be clear that we'll put together something, but it is imperfect and it is in isolation, especially because the referendum will occur before we have our capital improvement discussion. So it both will inform our capital improvement discussion, but also, you know, the information we're putting out is absent whatever we, discussions we have of that this summer. So we'll do our best, is what I'm, is what I'm saying, but it won't be perfect.
Thank you. And I think, as Gerard mentioned earlier, I mean, it's, right now, it's not even known exactly what year the work would occur. And I think just being transparent, you know, in our communication with people about that, you know, that this is a desired year, it may not be till this year, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I always say, we've, we've got a timeline, but it always changes.
Yeah.
The design is going to change, too.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, we have Resolution 25-01 before us, our first resolution of the year. And in summary, it asks us, or it asks us to approve putting this language on the April 1st ballot. The language is, should the city council of the city of Lake Mills authorize the borrowing and expenditure of up to 2 and a half million dollars for the construction and associated development expenses of an addition and renovation of the LD Fargo Public Library at 120 East Madison Street in the city of Lake Mills. So if there's no further discussion, Madison, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-01, which would be authorizing the referendum question for the April 1st ballot?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the library board and staff for being here tonight and for all your work on this project. Okay, that's the end of our council business in open session for tonight. Recommendations for future agendas. We have a Sandy Beach Work Session that we postponed due to weather back in December. So do we have a new date for that?
We're going to have to send out some more dates to council members. So you will see some requests for availability here soon, but the 15th and the 16th are not going to work.
So 15th and 16th are not a go, so stay tuned. Okay. And next agenda, anything?
The only thing I want to reiterate from the beginning of the meeting is the Wongard's application will not be on the agenda on the 21st.
Okay.
They've requested that delay because they want to give the city the opportunity to entertain the potential of a sale to the city.
Okay. Anything else from council members on future agenda items?
I would like to earmark a future agenda item to discuss the Rock Lake Water Level Order provided. The DNR team has their conclusions of the studies that the, that they had laid out to address, that I would be interested in that in future agenda item.
Okay, thanks. We are still in telecast. If folks could keep it down, please. Okay. Thank you very much for that. So now we'll go on to Agenda Item 11, which is to convene in closed session. The purpose is to discuss the collective bargaining agreement for the Lake Mills Police Department pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.851(c), considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and Section 19.851(c) for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So can I get a motion to convene into closed session, please?
I move to go into closed session.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quedno. On favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's 4-0. So we will, this will be the end of our broadcast this evening, and we'll be going in closed session. And when we reconvene, that will be not televised. So thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.